Hey Ben, was it snowing down at City Hall a little bit ago?
You bet, yeah, I had to bring out a shovel. But as you can see, I got it all cleared out.
Yeah, it looks like it's sunny again there.
Yeah, I have to admit, I did not realize or wasn't aware that we had spadeous cold nights coming. So I was out at the last minute this afternoon trying to cover my citrus, some of which is rather large, which is fine, except for it was windy and it's like watching the heist on cops when I try to do that. We'll see in the morning how I did, but the really big lemon tree is going to have to wait till tomorrow with both Jane and I will have to tackle that one. That one could take one night and I don't think we hit 28 till like about five o'clock in the morning, I think with the forecast. So but evidently this goes through Friday, I'm told, so.
Great. Well, I had the kids at Taekwondo and they were out having their class out in the parking lot and it started snowing on them, so.
You guys got snow, interesting.
Withstood it for about, oh, five minutes and then the teacher decided that she probably should bring them in.
We got rain here for a minute, a couple of minutes, but I didn't see snow. Who saw snow in Kattati? Anyone else?
Well, I was more down towards Kadluma there, so maybe it was there. But it was pretty funny because I was sitting in the car and I'm like, what the heck is that? And I realized it was snow.
The last time I saw snow in Kattati was like 1971.
It's a while.
It snowed when the kids were in school.
Yeah, I remember that.
Yeah.
I remember them getting cardboard out and trying to slide down the hill.
And we went behind Sippy Hall, nobody had played in that snow. It was awesome.
That was like 99, 2000, somewhere in there?
Yeah, the kids were little. I took them out of school on the bad card.
I remember that at Sonoma State, everybody ran outside.
All right, let's see here. We are at 5:30. I'm looking, it looks like most of our participants and attendees are here. I'm going to ask staff if we're ready to get rolling. I believe, Mayor, we are, yes. All right, well, famous last words with that, and I'm very pleased to welcome everybody tonight to this joint meeting at the Kattati Community Council, City Council and the Successor Agency to the former Kattati Community Development Agency for a special joint meeting with Planning Commission and the City Council to review the Housing Element Workshop. This is our first meeting on this. And before we go to a roll call, I just wanted to take a second with the group and kind of set the table for how we might approach this, I hope, tonight. Because we have many participants and lots to cover in this packet. As much as I'm a fan of Jimi Hendrix, whoever's mic is open, I will ask you to close your mics because I think we might have some feedback problems tonight. So with that, we need to stop by 7:15, I understand, so we don't quite have a full two hours. So I wanted to suggest first of all, this is an introductory meeting. There's no final decisions or need to reach consensus required tonight, which is fortunate because this is the first time we're looking at it. We're here to listen to staff presentations, suggestions, we're here to ask questions, to listen to the public, and to share our initial thoughts, reactions, our yays, our nays, and any general direction we want to share with staff. So to accomplish this, what I want to suggest tonight, I look through the packet, like all of you, probably several times, and I see that divides up into two main areas. We have a presentation which culminates in four issues we're being asked to consider. So I think after we do our initial public comment, I'd like to have staff do that. And if we could stop right there after those four issues, that would give us a chance then to have a round of questions from everybody that might have a question on the commission and the council, go to another public comment, which I think would be fair, and then come back to see if we have any, a round of comments again from the commission and the council. And it's again, the same things, yays, nays, reactions, whatever that might be. Then we can roll into the individual policy options. We're actually opened up to ask to talk about at the end of those issues. There are numerous ones. I think we might all want to weigh in on them potentially. So that's the thought, at least. If we need to deviate, we certainly will, but I'd like to approach it that way, just to keep us structured and try and make our meeting while at the same time giving everybody a chance to participate and give the necessary feedback that staff has to have. So with that, I'd like to ask our city clerk if we could have a roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. I'm going to start with our planning commissioners. Commissioner Murphy.
Here.
Commissioner Rodriguez. I do see him here. Commissioner Rodriguez. And we'll come back. Commissioner Moore.
Yes, here.
Vice Chair Hancock.
Yes, yeah.
Chair Lemus.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Councilmember Sparks.
Here.
Vice Mayor Harvey.
Here.
Mayor Landman.
And here. All right, well, thank you for that. And before we get rolling, I would like to just make a section and ask the city manager if you might introduce the staff that are here tonight to the public.
All right, thank you, Mayor. This might be a little trickier than normal tonight, but obviously we have myself, Damian Obed, city manager, Noah House, director of community development, which is mostly leading the show tonight. And then, of course, we have Lauren Burgess, our city clerk, who is kind of running everything else behind the scenes, and our city attorney, John Barker. And Noah, I could hand it off to you to introduce the team from Four Leaf that I'll be presenting.
Thank you, Damian, Mayor Landman, and Chair Lemus. So yeah, just this evening, we have with the staff from Four Leaf, they are the Housing Element Consultants. There's a few more consultants on the team, but this evening we have Luke Lindenbusch, who's a housing planner with Four Leaf, and we have Chakara, I'm sorry, Thomas, and she is lead, I think she's a senior planner is her title, with Four Leaf as well. They're with us. Jane Riley may pop in. She is the leading up the effort, but Chakara and Luke are our lead staff preparing the housing element for us.
Well, very good. Thank you for introducing everybody. So with that, before we jump into this, I'd like to take a moment and ask the clerk if we could see if we have any public comment to begin the meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Looking to our attendees tonight, if you would like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon. If you are dialing in from your telephone, please dial star nine to raise your hand. Mayor Landman, that will end the public comment.
Perfect, thank you. With that, I'm going to ask staff to begin the presentation. And we'd ask if we could just pause when we get to the very end of the four issues that you want to present, and we'll take a break and have one round of questions, public input, and comment at that time. So with that, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor Leven, Chair Lemus, Commission, and council members and members of the public. I really am excited to present this item to you. It's been the culmination of a lot of work already. It's been behind the scenes mainly, but we did have a little bit of some public engagement through survey work, workshops, et cetera, going back actually almost a couple of years now, and I'll let the Housing Element Consultants get to that. But if we can bring up the presentation, I believe Luke is going to drive the presentation, but I just wanted to give a brief introduction while that's going. So here's the landing page. As identified here, this is joint meeting for all of us. We will be focusing primarily on the initial sites assessments and some of the statutory programs. But briefly, I'm Noah House, as identified, and we've already introduced our consultant team. For Leaf, from Four Leaf, we do have a Civic Edge, a public engagement team. They're not on the meeting this evening, but they have been helping us. And our environmental analysis of this document is planned to be by RingCon. They've been doing some behind the scenes preliminary work as well, and their efforts will really get going once we get the draft document out to the public, so just be aware of that. Really briefly, I just wanted to identify some of the statutory requirements of a housing element. So we are required by the state to provide goals, policies, and objectives and programs to preserve, improve, and develop housing within the city. Where we have to identify the projected housing needs for all segments of the community, identify a number of sites that can accommodate our Rena projections for the next eight years. This document does have to get certified by HCD with the state. And like everything the city does, it has to be consistent with the general plan. So I just wanted to touch on those. And as Mayor Landman identified, there is a lot of policy discussion, but we will be focused on potential programs after we get into some of the background analysis that has been done to date. And this info we receive will likely inform multiple draft programs that get brought back. So please, in addition to these specific policies and programs in front of you, please do feel free to speak broadly because that will also help us to sharpen our pencils as we really draft policies and target some of the things that the state has told us we have to do. Parallel to what's happening right now is our needs assessment is being done. So the actual demographic and realistic situations that Kattati residents are facing are being analyzed right now. And that needs assessment will also go into informing some of the policies that are brought before the council intermission. So but again, be comfortable speaking broadly and specifically. And then we are going to have a high level discussion of the housing opportunity sites. We don't need to get into any specific sites right now, but we're going to talk about kind of the strategy and the approach. And it's worth noting that we have adequate capacity zones within our current sites right now. So we're not looking to rezone any properties just to meet our arena. But we are looking to target those sites, and it is a requirement that we identify specific properties we're anticipating to develop over this cycle. As identified in the staff report, this is going to be an overview. We're going to talk about demographics. We're going to get your feedback. And then we're going to ask for the public to provide feedback as well, and all that's going to go into the drafting of these policies and programs in addition to some of the other elements of the housing element itself. And with that, I will turn it over to Luke Lindenbusch, who is going to lead the presentation.
Thank you very much, Noah, and good evening, Kattati Council and Planning Commission. It's great to see you all this evening and to be presenting to you on the progress that we've made today with the housing element. So a little bit what I'm going to go over in this presentation, first, we're going to look at some of the preliminary community survey results and how that'll factor into some of the decision making that we're presented with tonight. And then we'll go into the preliminary sites assessment, how we plan to address the regional housing needs allocation for the city of Kattati, and then once again, go into some of those policy options, which again, are not exhaustive. This is absolutely a starting point, and we're not making any decisions tonight. We're really just getting direction from both bodies. So first, on the preliminary survey results, we received a total of 126 responses for the community survey, which is about 2% of the city of Kattati, so really a strong feedback in terms of the amount that we could get. We noted, just in terms of demographics, that about 50% of respondents have lived in Kattati for over 10 years. About 50% of respondents are over 50 years old. 70% of respondents live in a single family home or home on a large lot, which is consistent with the housing typology of Kattati. Over 70% of respondents own their current residence, and over 50% of respondents say it was easy or somewhat easy to find their current home. So really what we're looking at here is analyzing these demographic trends in our survey responses. We want to be hearing from as many people in the community as possible. So again, these are preliminary survey responses, and we're really hoping to hear more. And just, just one of the reasons why we're bringing up some of the demographic trends right now is we do see that these trends are skewing a little bit older. They're skewing a little bit more toward homeowners. So really, a big part of our next push as we go into the draft housing strategy and the rest of the housing element process is going to be making as diligent of an effort as possible to be reaching out to renters and students in particular. So looking at some of the responses from the community on the survey, what makes your neighborhood special or unique? Over 50% of respondents said the people, the homes, the shops, and the parks. But the most overwhelming response saying that people love Kattati for the people who are here. And many of the respondents of the survey also said that they chose to live in Kattati because it was where they were able to find affordable housing, because they love the community, and because their friends and family live here. Looking at some of the housing issues and opportunities that are identified with the survey, some of the most successful housing types in Kattati today were identified as smaller, single-family homes, townhouses, and duplexes. And the most important housing issues were ranked with affordability at the top of the list and government regulations being at the lowest of the list. So no huge surprises there. But in terms of most appropriate areas to prioritize housing development, we also saw a strong desire to have housing development concentrated along the major corridors of the city of Kattati, with East Kattati Avenue being at the head of that, and having more housing at the south end of the city being ranked as the lowest. So looking at public opinion on affordable housing, we saw a majority of respondents were positive or neutral toward having an affordable housing project constructed in their neighborhood, with an even stronger percentage being in support of the use of public funds to construct affordable housing in Kattati. Here's a word cloud of some of the write-in responses that we saw from the preliminary community survey results. Some of these, you know, just with a word cloud, it's not always easy to discern whether these are positive or negative attributes, but you can get a sense of some of what of the conversation was centering around. The people are really looking at building downtown. The people are looking for affordable. The people love this community and that people want and like this community because it's really walkable, bikeable, things of that. So now going from the survey more into the preliminary sites assessment, how the city of Kattati is going to approach the issue of the regional housing needs allocation in this housing element cycle. So when we look at the sites inventory, this is where we're identifying sites across the city of Kattati where housing can be developed within the next eight years. As Noah mentioned, we have the capacity to meet these Rena targets without the need to rezone. This is really important for us in the housing element process because it's going to save us a lot of time. It's going to save us a lot of energy. And it's going to allow us to focus on really having a housing element that's more tailored to Kattati's needs as opposed to spending all of our time trying to jump through the hoops of rezoning in a really compressed timeframe. So this is really good news, and we're going to show you how we're factoring into meeting the zoning capacity for these 234 homes across income level. And that's really important to mention as well, which is that a lot of time when we think about Rena, we think about the big number, the 234 homes that a city needs to zone for, that Kattati needs to zone for. But really, this is broken down by income category, and there are a handful of objectives, a handful of requirements that make sure that cities are meeting their objectives to house members of their community at all income levels from very low income to above moderate or market rate. So really, the objective today is to look at the preliminary view of these sites, not the specific sites, but how we've come to address the Rena and how this is going to inform the policies and programs. So this is through a combination of looking at planned and approved projects, projects that are in the pipeline. projects that are in the pipeline, projects that have already been approved, projects that are in development, projects that are very likely to develop within the next eight years. Additionally, there are what we call safe harbor development assumptions for estimating the amount of ADUs or accessory dwelling units that are going to be developed over the next eight years. In addition, with some limitations, there is a possibility to reuse vacant sites from the previous sites inventory, and I'll get a little bit more into that in a moment. And lastly, we'll be looking at sites that currently allow housing that have developer and owner interest that have not previously been considered in sites inventories from the fifth or fourth cycle and that might not have projects currently in the pipeline, but where there is strong developer or owner interest. So first, looking at the calculation of RENA credits, how we can determine the safe harbor assumption, or in other words, what's going to pass with HCD for determining how many ADUs we can assume can be built over the next eight years. So as you can see, it's based on the last eight years from 2018 to 2021, and we're averaging in Katati 3 ADUs produced per year. So over the entire planning period, we consume a total of 24 ADUs, broken down by income category in a way that's pre-approved and will pass muster with HCD, broken out in the bottom, right? So looking at the overall table, you can see at the bottom with the percentage of RENA met for the policies and programs and the RENA credits through pipeline, ADU assumptions, sites from prior cycles, potential additional housing sites in the Santero Way specific plan, we're in really good shape on the site's assessment. So again, this is not the area where we need to be worried. But just to go a little bit line by line through these, again, pipeline projects, those that are in the development, pipelines that are going to be developed or likely to be developed within the next eight years, ADU assumptions already covered. Preservation of affordability is looking at the acquisition of market rate units through a nonprofit partner. And that would be formed through a joint powers authority that's in process through a handful of cities in Sonoma County. So there is likelihood that we'll be able to count about 28 units for those deed restrictions on existing market rate units that will be now affordable to renters. Looking at sites from the fifth cycle housing element that are suitable to be used again, that have not already been developed, we're seeing a good amount there. Additional potential sites that have been identified already account for some as well, and Santero Way rounding out the rest. So when we look at extremely low income, very low income, and low income, we have to break them out in particular income category, but when we're looking at RENA, those numbers can be aggregated. So that's why you're seeing at the bottom there about 149% number, a really good number to be at, despite not necessarily being right at the threshold with extremely low income, which is the hardest income bracket to be able to cover due to the difficulties of financing. So now to go into some of the policy options, and we'll pause on these as we had discussed. First and foremost, looking at sites and zoning. So again, we're really excited about the fact that we don't have to rezone. It's important for us to be able to do what we can to have a housing element that really meets the needs of Katati and doesn't put us in an issue of having to wait for a really long time for the rezoning to go through, for the environmental review to go through, and then being at risk of not having a compliant housing element. So really, we're recommending option A here, using other programs to meet housing needs, avoiding rezoning to be able to meet an adequate sites inventory. And again, avoid those potential penalties if the housing element is not adopted by January 31st of next year. But another option to consider is considering supplemental rezoning programs. So just want to note that this is separate from rezoning to meet the sites inventory that is required through RENA. And this is an option throughout the planning period. Rezoning as a program is something that the city can pursue at any time. It's not something that has to be decided now or by the end of the housing element period. And it's something that the city has done within and beyond its housing element processes before. So really, this is something that is, it's about avoiding the mandatory rezoning and doing it when it makes sense for Katati. Looking at issue number two, accessory dwelling units. There is, we, again, we're looking at an assumption of three ADUs per year. This is an upward trend, and we're recommending policy option A, which is to increase ADU assumptions, really maximizing the use of ADU and JADU allowances by having new programs that further facilitate and encourage ADU and JADU development. This is a form of gentle density that has been favorable among many in Sonoma County and has provided further housing options for a broad range of the community, a variety of income categories. So this could be done through a handful of ways. There's the Napa-Sonoma ADU Center that has programs to increase public education. There are programs through Homes for Sonoma that have, you know, have modular units that are built and are, that are facilitated to be built within the community with forgivable loans. There is also an option to have pre-approved design with the city of Katati, where it's easier to be able to develop an ADU or a JADU within the kinds of design and development standards that you want to be putting forward as a community. So really, there's a number of ways that we can get past three per year. It's a pretty conservative number, and that could help factor into the RENA. The option B is just as good of one, to use the HCD safe harbor ADU assumptions of three per year and not commit to adopting additional programs. Really, the sites inventory and meeting the RENA doesn't necessarily need this number to go up, but the programs are something for the council and the commission to consider. Issue number three is that of no net loss. So no net loss, really, in its most basic understanding is, say that you zoned or had the adequate amount of zoning for the exact amount of Katati's RENA. This is something that we wouldn't recommend, because all it would take would be one site being developed as something else, being developed at lower units than are assumed within the housing element to potentially put the city of Katati out of compliance. So really, many jurisdictions take the option of having this buffer of 30%, having more sites than the city would need to just make sure that they're adequate sites to be able to make sure that you're not going out of compliance with your RENA in each income category. So you might be asking, why wouldn't you be recommending this, just going for the 130%? Because there's a little bit more nuanced ways to do it, and that's why we're recommending policy options B and C. One of these options, B, looks at the development capacity assumptions. Every single community in Sonoma County has what is known as a default density. So basically, there's the assumption that if you want to include a site in your inventory, it's going to develop at 20 units per acre. The problem is that a lot of perfectly viable sites to include in housing elements are not zoned at 20 units per acre and would require a mandatory rezoning if they were going to be included at that level of zoning. A lot of the time, this comes in just a little bit below 20 units per acre at about 16 or 18 units per acre, including many of the sites in Katati. Some of the sites in Katati are zoning much higher, so this is not necessarily applicable on every site. But really, what this is about is making sure that we're looking at realistic capacity. And we do this by looking at past development patterns. And in Katati, we can see that Katati really is developing at about 80% of what is zoned. So we're going to be able to reasonably decrease development capacity assumptions here, and it's still going to pass muster with HCD. So this is one area where we're recommending looking at how we're going to be dealing with our sites and making sure that we don't incur any net loss. And option C really more directly deals with this idea of having a buffer. So you don't have to be scrambling to rezone a site to be able to have a compliant housing element over the eight-year planning period. And this is accomplished through what we call an administrative B-list of sites that could be added to the list as needed if something develops, again, lower than anticipated, with lower density than anticipated, if it develops as something else, like a commercial use. But similar to option A, it identifies sites that can be used, but doesn't include them in the inventory. So one downside of including a site in an inventory is that you can't use it more than two cycles, with two consecutive cycles without a strong justification, but there's a reason that you can include it a third time. So this option is good, because if there are sites where, you know, that it might develop at some point in time, but really, there's not that much worry about making sure that there's an adequate sites inventory now, there's an opportunity to be able to make sure that that list can be added if something else develops differently without needing to go back and give an amendment to your housing element and possibly fall out of compliance at any point in that time. And this is, this B-list can be added to the main inventory of the housing element whenever necessary on an annual basis with the annual progress report. So for those reasons, we're looking, taking a nuanced approach to no net loss, making sure that the city of Katati is in compliance throughout the entirety of the eight-year planning period. Again, we're in really good shape, but we're recommending policy options B and C to make sure that development capacity assumptions can be decreased where appropriate and that the B-list of sites as needed can make sure that as the city moves forward within the next year, eight years, that it's going to be in good shape. And the issue number four, or a handful of issues falling under the bucket of number four, are the consideration of potential new programs. And I just want to stop again to just really stress that this is just a handful of programs that the city of Katati can look at in developing a housing element. And you may be asking, why should we have any programs anyway? We're really good with the sites. Then do we even need new programs at all? And the answer is ultimately yes. There's a requirement that there's a program of actions that every jurisdiction adopts as a part of their housing element, because the sites can be there, but ultimately, we know the housing doesn't build itself, and there really needs to be the effort on the part of staff in the city to make sure that these programs are moved forward and that they're done in a way that is really in consideration of the community and what it needs. So some of the ones that we've put forward are looking at housing on church and school sites. In Katati, this is really more applicable to church sites. And this could be accomplished through a zoning text amendment or through a workforce housing overlay. This would provide more flexible options to incentivize the development of housing on land that's currently being underutilized. So this is really, there's a lot of overlap between the first three of these, really. Looking at housing on church sites, the workforce housing overlay, and a density bonus program, really looking at ways that there can be tailored approaches to make sure that housing can be built and that there's as big of an incentive as possible to build housing where it's appropriate. So with something like a workforce housing overlay, this wouldn't just say every parcel in Katati could be developed with workforce housing. Really, it would be an approach that could be applied and tailored to certain sites or areas, like the East Katati corridor, where there may be additional incentives to build workforce housing, affordable housing, anything of this sort, depending on whatever the desires of the council and the commission are. Additionally, a city density bonus program would allow enhanced density bonuses beyond state requirements, again, in supporting whatever the city's specified needs are. The current density bonus program allows a 50% density bonus for certain qualifications being met. And the city of Katati can decide which ones it would want to go farther on, whether it would be a greater affordability, a deeper affordability for people of very low or extremely low income, accessibility, universal design that is conducive to senior housing. There's really a number of directions that a city can go with in developing the density bonus program. Part of one of the programs that is going to be a part of this housing element is just making sure that the city of Katati is compliant with existing state law on the density bonus program. But this is an opportunity for the council and commission to evaluate whether or not going farther is something that is of the interest of Katati. And lastly, there's a handful of options that we can look at to incentivize smaller units that are affordable by design. This is really in the spirit of the cottage housing ordinance and looking at other ways to pursue what has been identified as a clear priority of the city and really having these affordable by design units, as identified in the survey, like smaller, single-family homes, townhomes, duplexes, cottage courts, things of this sort. One way to do this is by using density unit equivalents to encourage developments of units that are smaller than three bedrooms. And this would basically, as identified in the staff report, be looking at an evaluation of impact fees. So it's not just, it wouldn't just be that an 800 square foot unit would pay the same impact fees as a 3,000 square foot unit, just because they're both the same housing type, but really looking at the number of bedrooms, square footage, metrics that actually look at incentivizing smaller units to be able to create smaller units throughout the city of Katati. Another option would be looking at an SB 10 ordinance to support existing cottage housing provisions. This is an ordinance that, unlike SB 9, which was passed, and it applies throughout the entire state, is opt-in. So if Katati decides they don't want to do it, nothing changes. But it is one way to incentivize the development of units that are 10 or less units. It could be three units, it could be four units, really tailored to whatever the desires of the community are in whatever particular areas our desire to put them in. And basically, this would be much like workforce housing overlay or a density bonus program would be existing as an overlay. It wouldn't change the underlying zoning, but it would be another way to be able to incentivize the development of smaller units throughout the city of Katati. So we'll go back through the four issues and options. Once again, for everyone to ask the questions, but just want to go into some of the next steps. Again, this is really the first pass of these issues, and we're going to be looking at the feedback from the council and the commission over the coming weeks in developing the draft housing strategy. And that'll be prepared for input at a city council workshop in April. Additionally, over the course of spring and fall, the draft housing element will come out, and there will be a variety of periods for public review. So there's going to be an opportunity for public comment to be occurring throughout the process. And in late 2022, there's going to be a draft housing element and secret document prepared. It'll come back. And again, public input is really an important part of this process. The survey results are preliminary, and they're going to continue to roll in. And we're going to be continuing to take all of that community feedback to heart as we develop.
Change as need be. We're already there, because I wanted to break that up in the middle so we could deal with the first part of the presentation and deal into the proposed policy separately, because this is a lot to work with. But we'll still, I think we'll just take two passes at it so we have time, because I don't think one round of questions and comments is enough to deal with all of this, for all of us. And fortunately, the presentation was rather quick, which was excellent, covering that much data. So with that, what I'd like to do is just open to begin with for questions on the general presentation and so the initial issues that were put forward to us, which you can see on packet, beginning on packet page. 16, excuse me, 15. And let's change that. It's page 14. So with that, what I'd like to do is open to questions on anything up to that point. And I'll begin with going through the commission one by one, because where I'm sitting, I'm not going to be able to see all your hands. So what I'm going to do is go through in a roll call, if I might. I'll go through the commission first, then come to the council. I will wait to go last. I don't know if that's a good or bad thing, but that's generally what a mayor is supposed to do. So I'm going to listen to all of you first. So I'd like to begin with Mr. Hancock, if he has any questions at this time.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I've got a question on the extremely low. Would that include the idea of a hostel? So that would be less than 500 squite or something like that. But the idea that extremely low income, I've seen this work in other areas where there can essentially be some form of simple studio that people have protection from the elements, but, and possibly an attached shower bathroom, but there would be common facilities of some sort, corridors and external to the outside. So that'd be my question.
Generally, those type of units do get a little bit tricky in terms of counting them toward RENA. There are requirements and definitions on what defines a unit. They usually require an individual bathroom, a utility kitchen. However, they can be considered as part of the programs of the housing element if co-housing-like models are something that the commission and council want to pursue.
And I would just add, Commissioner Hancock, we are interested in looking at communal or co-housing options, just given that that is a trend we're seeing with younger folks, such as the student population.
Just to put in, I actually saw one operating in Bend in Oregon that seemed to be very effective. It was just one data point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hancock. I'll go next to Commissioner Moore.
I just had a question on, I know in the past, we've done a assisted living facility out on Grabastine Highway. Would that count as any of our numbers? Because basically, you're housing a lot of folks in one facility.
Again, just given that definition of a unit, it might not count toward RENA. But there are a number of requirements in terms of statutory objectives that have to be met in terms of following the programs of the housing element. So that's not to say that they can't be pursued.
Now I would add, one thing we could look at is if we get another project like that, we could push them to include some units that would meet our RENA. And a lot of those types of developments do like that transitional housing, where folks can age in place and get different ages.
That's what I was thinking. On Snyder Lane, they actually have a facility. They do assisted living where small apartments, and then as you age out of them... you age out of them, you basically go into a different facility. So just something to think about in our future.
All right, well, thank you, Commissioner Moore. Let's see, next, Commissioner Rodriguez, do you have any questions for staff tonight?
I think you're muted.
I believe you're muted.
I'm seeing him as present but muted. Jonathan, if you can unmute. Why didn't I come back to you? I'll give you a chance to work with that. And I'll move next to Commissioner Murphy.
And I'll hold my questions until the second part of the presentation.
All right, thank you. So with that, let's see. Let me try one more time. We'll see if Councilmember Rodriguez, are you able to speak to us at this point?
Oh, sorry, can you hear me now?
You're coming through loud and clear, perfect.
Sorry. No, I don't have any questions, but mentioned there was a packet, I didn't get any packets.
There should be a packet available for you, and there are packets available online as planned, Commissioner. You'll definitely, for this series of meetings, want to download these early and go through them early is my advice, because if the other ones are like this one, they're rather dense. So no worries, we have a good presentation, we'll be fine.
All right, thank you.
And let me move to Chair Lemus next.
Yes, I don't have any questions at this time. I do want to hear more of the presentation.
All right, great. Well, that brings us to the council then, and I'll start with Councilmember Ford.
Thanks, Mayor Lemon. Thanks, Luke and Noah, for their great presentation and the very clear packet. I really appreciated the packet. So I just wanted to ask for a little help in understanding how you decide whether a site would be appropriate for very low income versus extremely low income housing? Like, what is it that makes those 10 units worth of sites that are left over from the fifth cycle housing element? You know, why are they in the BLI column and not the ELI column? Is it just zone density?
That's a great question. And it ultimately does come down to zone density. And really, that's why, you know, I think the programs are so important, even in meeting RENA through the density that is prescribed to be able to build affordable housing, because we know that there's a certain density that affordable housing builds at. And, you know, if without that, then essentially, these sites could be developed at any sort of income level.
And let me follow up just a little bit. So are those densities that determine whether a site is appropriate for extremely low versus low versus middle or moderate? Are those the same in San Francisco as they are here, as they are in Lake County? Or are they somehow tailored to the, you know, the housing mix and the building density of the locality?
So the default density does change between communities. For Khatari, the default density is 20. For larger cities, Santa Rosa is 30, for example. And San Francisco's is definitely even higher than that. So.
So when you say default density, that means a site that's zoned for 20 can be claimed to be appropriate for extremely low or very low or?
Correct. And it also looks at the development patterns of affordable housing in Khatari. So that's part of how we're able to justify the realistic capacity of how these sites develop. So on some sites, we'll be going with potentially less than 20 units, based on the history of how affordable housing has been done in Khatari.
Okay, okay, thanks.
All right, thank you for that. Let's see, next, Councilmember Moore, do you have any questions on the first part of the presentation?
No, well, I do have a couple. If you were going to break these down into segments, I think initially, the recommendation is on the zoning, that we don't have to rezone, so we're good on that. And then you're going to go on to the different sections.
Yeah, what I'd hope to do is allow us, we can talk about the issues that are listed beginning in packet page 14, and then we'll come around for a second pass and talk about the various policies that are being asked for. I also certainly will have some flexibility. Somebody thinks about a question or something they want to say about something earlier or about an issue later on, we certainly have some willingness. So if there's any lack of clarity, just go ahead and let it go now. We'll take a second pass, so nobody will miss an opportunity.
Thank you. And Mr. Lindberg, you had indicated that Khatari's density was 20 per acre?
That's the default, yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm good, thank you, Mayor Lemon.
All right, thank you for that. Let's see, next, I'll go to Councilmember Sparks.
Thank you. I have two questions. One is about something that's not in the report. I'm just curious about, in our previous housing element, there was a section about homelessness and supportive housing and shelter space and things like that. And I'm wondering whether, are you envisioning that our new housing element would carry forward some of the goals and policies that we had in the previous element? Or would that section drop off? Or just sort of wondering how you're envisioning that?
Great question. Certainly, it's not something that factors as much into the site's consideration and units, for the same reasons as cohousing and assisted living. Homeless shelters, for example, usually can't be considered for units. So they're what are called non-unit objectives. But those can absolutely be considered and carried over into the sixth cycle housing element. Homelessness has certainly not ceased to be an issue, so I don't see why it wouldn't be included.
And then I have a question for Mayor Lemon. If I have a clarifying question about one of the policy suggestions, should I ask that now, or would you like me to save that for when we're having the policy discussion?
If we could save that for when we get around to policy, it might keep it all more coherent. If you think it really needs to be answered to inform something that goes with the earlier part of the presentation, I'm willing to hear it.
It was part of issue four, but I think that's the, those are the policies, so I'll hang on to it.
That's the problem, it kind of overlaps your eyes.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you. So let's see, that takes me to Vice Mayor Harvey. Questions?
Yes, in the community opinion survey, I'm glad we got as many responses we did, and it sounds like you think that that was a very good number. My concern has to do with the expressions from the citizens, and we say that we're going to incorporate those in the housing plan. But some of the things that the citizens have expressed do not necessarily match with what our experience has been for what pencils out for developers. So how can that perception really be changed? Because there is a mismatch with that. How do we address that?
That's a great question. And I will address that first, just by talking about the nature of community engagement. We'll consider everything that we can in terms of community engagement, and there will also be comments that just can't be applied in the housing element, because they are antithetical to statutory objectives and requirements for what we need to do to have a certifiable housing element. So in that regard, they're considered, but of course, not everything can be implemented. And I'll ask you to just repeat a little bit the second part of your question, if you wouldn't mind.
Oh, no, I forgot, but it gets at the whole affordability. You know, that was the highest one, I think you highlighted on there. And again, we have had situations where we have entitled projects and worked for, you know, years with different groups to get them actually built. And they never, they either can't get the financing, or they come to a point where it doesn't pencil out for them. And I'm just, I didn't see anything in any of the programs or strategies that really helped with that. It seems all about just making things smaller. It doesn't help us get anything built. And that seems to be a lot of what the problem is, especially considering, you know, how you say, we have enough spots to meet these needs, but they don't get built.
Thank you. I better understand your question now, so I appreciate that. The housing element is basically broken down into four sections. It's identifying the housing needs of a community, which is largely what's been done and focused on in the kickoff presentation with some of the demographic trends and what the city is looking at. It's identifying the sites, second most. It's identifying programs to address the housing needs. And the fourth is looking at constraints. And I think that the part of your question is really looking at constraints to development. We have to look at both governmental and non-governmental constraints. So really looking at the history of development in Khatari and why affordable housing perhaps has not been developed in certain instances will be something that we'll be factoring into in the draft housing strategy and in the housing element as a whole. So that information is very helpful, not just what we can do, but areas where a city has struggled. It's really important in understanding where we can identify not just the need, but really building stronger opportunity.
There's, Noah, I would just like to add, Vice Mayor Harvey, I really appreciate the question, because I meant to highlight that we have put Ford as a discussion item as a part of the strategies, discussions with the council, looking at housing financing and where the city can try to assist with that. And that will be the topic of some of our future programs. So I didn't bring it up in this report, because we've already talked about the strategic planning, but just know that we are looking at what we can do with that, and we're waiting to see some of the constraints analysis before we formulate those.
Thank you for that, Noah, because that is really helpful, considering that that seems to always be where we fall down and try as we may. I mean, I really thought we were going to have that apartment housing down by the train station, and those poor folks, you know, struggled. So thank you for that. That's all I have right now, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Harvey. All right, let's see, while I have Mr. House's microphone open, I'll ask, I have a question to ask, and it might be better suited to him, I think, but I'll let staff decide who wants to answer that. And the only question, the presentation was fine, no general questions about that. One question on the four issues that I had was on number two, the ADU approach. And what I read in the packet was very open-ended. Just in general, it seemed to suggest, although we had enough sites to be okay, to find safe harbor with our normal production of ADUs, there was an encouragement to start pushing to develop a lot more. And knowing that along with the positives of housing, you get the negatives of increased crowding, parking, issues like that, I wasn't sure if that was something I wanted to support. Just quick background is, you know, Khatari is being pushed to much greater development due to RENA and various state laws than perhaps it normally would have gone into, and that is what it is. But I have that in mind, and this is why I ask, it's really hard for us to give a general thumbs up to taking an approach like this, but we're not saying what the program is. Now, I heard several programs put forward, a few of which I didn't know if I'd be interested in, but the one that was suggested, the pre-approved design thing, made a lot of sense to me. We make sure we get something that we all agree is a good fit for the town, that the public could have some input on. It would help perhaps smooth a way to build more ADUs and reduce the red tape for people who do want to do this and are willing to go that particular direction. So I just wanted to ask, what is the intent of the city with the ADU approach? If we didn't use safe harbor, what's, I really kind of, I think we need to know when this comes back. I love an answer tonight, but if we don't have one for the future, for all these things, I think we need some more specificity, because I think we all know with more generic, open-ended things, sometimes you get unintended consequences. So what is the general intent of the city with that if we were to go for not using the safe harbor approach for ADUs?
Yeah, so I think, just generally, I think most communities in the county are looking at ADUs as an option. I think Luke used the term gentle density, which I do appreciate, because it's kind of a more efficient use of resources, right? You get to use your existing utility lines, it's an existing developed site, the environmental constraints and ability to build are there. So a lot of the communities are seeing those as relatively low-impact projects. All that being said, you know, having a new neighbor dropped into somebody else's backyard isn't always a, you know, light touch or light impact, so I think that's good perspective to keep in mind. You know, we don't have a specific target, but one thing that could come out of this is, I mean, right now, we've built such a low number, because we're just getting into really those ADU laws getting traction. I actually think we're likely to overshoot that a bit regardless of what we do, just because the law has changed so significantly and so rapidly, that now people who maybe weren't considering it at all are going to be, or the affordability has changed so much in such a short period of time, folks are going to be looking at that option to give their children or their parents somewhere else to live. So I think those two things mean we're going to get it regardless of what we do to market and kind of hold people's hand as they come forward. All that being said, we likely could push it a little bit higher if we had some programs to market them. And I will say, some of these programs are intended to take some of the pressure off staff, because you can imagine there's a lot of education and input process that goes through, you know, a homeowner has no experience coming to the counter and going through all that process, where if we can get pre-approved plans, if we can steer people towards those that we like, if we could list the Napa-Sonoma ADU Center as a resource on our website, have them do a lot of the initial logistic work, maybe link them to some of these folks like the Homes for Sonoma who provide financing options. Those are the types of things that, I mean, obviously from staff would take a little pressure off us, would likely let us take credit for the ADUs that we may be likely to see anyway. So one thing to think about from a council perspective, if we're averaging three a year, maybe put a number on the direction they'd like to see us try to go to, so maybe six a year, as a way to kind of get to some of the concerns that you've identified, but then also allow us to take credit for something that may actually happen, just because it changes in the law.
Well, I could certainly never complain about being in a position of taking credit for something that was going to happen anyway. So that wouldn't be a good thing to do. I do agree, I think this is, of the potential things that new laws are, you know, directing us towards, this is perhaps potentially one of the gentler ones. I will say, though, I agree with your position that we shouldn't forget that the great introduction of many new neighbors, which three or six a year certainly isn't doing, I don't think, but purposely trying to push far beyond that is interesting. I know in my time in Khatari, I've lived by three different ADUs, one of which was a great experience and continues to be. The other two, not as much. Obviously, people's mileage varies, but it has its pluses and minuses. So that was the only question I had. I think in general, for all these things, it would be nice to act, if you're asking our input, we probably need some more specificity, but we'll probably get into that, I think, as we get into discussion. So this is a perfect time to open it up to the public, see if we have any public comment, and then we'll roll back around for a round of comments on this issue.
Thank you, Mayor Lemon. Looking to our attendees tonight, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use your race hand icon, and if you're dialing in, dial star nine. Mayor Lemon, that will end public comment.
All right, well, that brings us back. So we're going to, just did what we did last time with questions, we'll now open it up to comments. And I'd be, and I'm sure staff would be very in and hystic in hearing what you like the sound of, where you have concerns, what works, what you think doesn't work, and any other ideas or things you'd like to share on the topic of the presentation and some of the issues that were put forward. And I'll begin again with Commissioner Hancock, please. And I think you're muted, there you go.
There we go, yes, I was just bouncing on the button there a little bit. I appreciate the overview, and definitely, it's nice to have, as Mayor Lemon sort of said, nice to have the programs identified. I personally see that there's possibly also some options within Khatari for people maybe to upgrade their current places, maybe that's a good way of putting it, to bring, you know, or to allow some of those numbers to come up. I, you know, some years ago, I had a discussion with a developer who is just southeast of Khatari in the Adeline facility, and I asked him about the general aspect of lower income or smaller, more dense buildings. And his answer was, well, the comparables don't pan out. So, I mean, I think that's just the challenge, and I just don't know how to address it, how to, you know, build some houses that are both cheaper and can achieve some market return. So thank you very much.
And I would encourage staff, if there's anything that's brought up as a comment that you would like to speak to, please feel free to jump in and let me know. And with that, I'll then go to Commissioner Moore.
It's just a, just a couple of comments. One of them is about the rezoning, I think that's great that we don't have to rezone any properties. I think that's always a nightmare in Qatadi when you get into rezoning people's property. Again, I I also agree with Vice Mayor Harvey about the challenges of trying to bring affordable housing. I know I've worked on quite a few projects over the years that have not been built in Qatadi. And I know with the fact of the loss of redevelopment over the years has really affected Qatadi in our. You know, in our process of of trying to to have a very low income and and low income housing. So I I'd love to see some of the aspects of the government. Way in on this as we do our housing element. Obviously, like you said, we've lost a lot of redevelopment money over the years, so if there's any. Any weight we can throw behind any other city, this says we would love to have some of that come back to be able to to develop housing. I don't know, maybe that's just a wish that I have, but it seems like we developed Charles Street and Burbank Housing and quite a few other projects. When we had redevelopment money, so just my own comments on that. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you. Just shot that hand, I believe we're next to Commissioner Rodriguez, if you have any comments on what we've been talking about, I'd welcome.
Just that I appreciate the the presentation and I hope that we do. Are the Qatadi is able to get more affordable housing built. You know, people, a lot of people say that they are for it, but then when it's time to build it and it's next door to them. They try and push back on it, so I hope Qatadi is different.
Well, it has been said many times in the past that Qatadi is different, so so we're probably good there, I think. Thank you for that. Let's see, who have next, Commissioner Murphy, I know you indicated you had some comments you wanted to share.
I do, comments that maybe are somewhat questions that. Needs necessarily be answered today, but something for us to think about as we continue these conversations. Overall, I think as a resident, all this information is so incredibly helpful and and very detailed. It's still hard for me to visualize what this means for the community, what how it will look different in five years, 10 years, 20 years. Physically, how it will look different, I, you know, I I'd love to learn more about. If we aren't rezoning, where we expect to see these changes. If we're focusing, we mentioned the East Qatadi corridor, if we could just talk more in the future about. What the look and feel would be, and if this is a change that is noticeable and the good from that and maybe the challenges from that. I'm just still having a hard time wrapping my head around it. I can understand the policy and the numbers, but I can't really picture how that's going to affect Qatadi as a as a community. So I'd love to hear more about that as we continue our conversations, and I'm sure there's more to come there. Couple other things that stood out to me, really curious, and and this, I know this probably doesn't play into our conversation today. But how we can continue to weave in keeping our current affordable housing affordable. Because I I think that's something we don't want to lose sight of. Also, you know, some folks mentioned specifically our senior population. And in addition to focusing on income, also considering fixed incomes that aren't going to change over the years. So, you know, while they, there may be a low income population that individuals could see a cost of living increase each year. I just want to make sure we're also considering how we can possibly implement or look into programs for our senior. Community members who are living on a fixed income. And then the last thing was just oversizing in housing. I think I read in the packet that. For large households, 50% of our large households are renters. So to me, you're, you know, if you're renting, that could be very well due to the facts, most likely due to the fact that you can't afford to buy. And those are large families, so we're talking a lot about small housing. And I think if we want to keep this a family-friendly community, we need to. Consider how to be creative in ensuring that we can accommodate larger families with two, three, four kids. That's it for me.
Well, good, thank you. And lastly, for the commission, I'll go to Chair Williams.
Okay, so like Commissioner Moore said, that I'm also glad that the reason is not needed. But I did have some questions about the program options that represented the workforce housing and the city density bonus program. Do we have examples that the workforce housing, does that exist right now? Or is that just like a new program we're thinking about bringing here? And the city density, I know that that's more for higher density housing. Do we have examples of that here, or is that something you want to bring here?
Great questions, thank you. First off, the workforce housing overlay would be a new program. And again, it wouldn't change the underlying zoning of any particular parcels, but would be a selection of parcels. That could be included and have additional zoning. Usually workforce housing overlay, their affordable housing overlays. Are in existing commercial areas, industrial areas that are not currently zoned for housing, but may be appropriate for it. And the density bonus program first and foremost would be in getting the city in compliance with AB 2345. Which allows a city, which which allows a density bonus of up to 50% if certain qualifications are met. But it's a certain percentage of affordability, things like that. So basically, that program would just be looking at moving past that. And if there would be areas where it might be appropriate to have, say, 70% density bonus. If it were, if there were a stronger amount of affordable units available. Or more affordable units for lower incomes on on the scale, things like that. So it would really be up to the city to determine what kind of areas where they would want to go the extra mile beyond compliance with the state program on that one.
I think affordability is key, because as you can see right now, so many people are being priced out of our community. I'm talking about the larger Sonoma family, so anything we can do to kind of help our housing. Thank you.
I'm not sure if the audio dropped out, I believe Chair Leemis had a question for staff, or did I miss that?
No, I finished my comment.
You did, okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
At that time of the evening, the internet's jumping around for all of us. All right, thank you for that, so that will move us then to the council next, and I will begin with Councilmember Ford.
Thanks, Mayor Landman. So I'm going to talk about the four issues and the the suggestions in the presentation in the packet about which directions we move. I'm in general in agreement with all of the proposed directions. So, but I think for me, the most important one is the Affordable by Design standards, which is kind of the last of the new program. I I wanted to ask one question of staff and the consultants, which is just my general impression of how the. The housing element process has changed. I was on a planning commission for the last housing element, and. My impression at the time was that the primary issue in the housing element at that time was the the RENA sites. Verification, like we just had to show there were enough sites, and beyond that, it was assumed the market would take care of it. And and now it feels like there's a much greater emphasis on the city actually working to produce that housing. I mean, I know we don't actually build the housing, but but we, you know, all of these programs. So it feels to me now like the the housing element process is show that you meet the RENA allocation, that that you've. Got enough sites zoned to meet the RENA allocation and describe what else you're doing to make sure this housing is going to happen. Is that an accurate perception?
I would absolutely agree. I think in part, some of the past housing elements have been able to potentially use sites that just aren't appropriate. And use them over and over again, and one of the new rules is you can only use it twice. And if it doesn't get built, you really need strong justification to show why it hasn't been built. So that really has weeded out a lot of the sites that are inappropriate for development and just shouldn't be in an inventory. So it has made the process for identifying sites much more rigorous. In addition to that, the statutory objectives have also expanded since the last housing element cycle to include affirmatively furthering fair housing. And really, that's the bulk of the comments that we're seeing from Southern California jurisdictions, which are about six months ahead of us on on the schedule. In terms of areas where there's additional scrutiny from the Department of Housing and Community Development. So I think it's a combination that the sites math just is becoming a little bit more of an intense exercise. And really, there needs to be some actually demonstrable capacity there that that some of these sites are actually going to be developed. And in addition to that, I think it's it's not just so much about the sites anymore.
Okay, so great, let me, let me just go down then the list of your suggestions and staff suggestions. On the ADU issue, I would favor a modest. Putting in place some programs, such as making sure people know about the option to build ADUs and JDUs. So that we could claim somewhat increased more than three a year, you know, maybe as much as six a year kind of expectation for new ADUs. I, one thing I like about the ADU model, in addition to the things that Noah mentioned about their inherently low impact. Not not negligible impact, but low impact in terms of utility hookups and additional city services. Is that there. The the homeowner is presumably nearby, so you don't have a sort of absentee landlord kind of setup. And I appreciate that, plus the the ability to support multi-generational households. So I would like to support the ADU model more than we currently do. On the no let, no net loss piece, couldn't you have made the one that has a B list the option B instead of option C? That's beside the point. And then on new programs, I'm having trouble envisioning where workforce housing overlay could apply in our town. I'm I'm, it's hard for me to envision, you know, our northwest section industrial area being appropriate for housing. And and all our downtown is already in a. Specific area plan that, you know, allows mixed use, so I'm having trouble envisioning where where workforce housing overlay would work. And I also feel like the the density bonus laws from the state have. They're so new and they're already so substantially, like the density bonuses are so substantially higher than they were previously. That I'm reluctant to to say we're going to push even beyond that, just a year after those new density bonuses are in place. Affordable affordability by design, especially the density unit equivalence model where we. Where we stop pretending that three studios is as impactful as three 5,000 square foot houses. Like, that's just a silly assumption in our code, and so it's not just the code of the density calculations that that has to play into. But but, you know, building permit fees and and utility hookup fees and and all the fees that go along with developing a unit that we have to look at. If we're going to start, I think, more realistically assessing impact. Thanks.
All right, thank you for that, Councilmember Ford, let's see, next, good, Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Well, you talked about earlier, we don't have to rezone, so that's good on that part. Regarding the ADUs, I would probably concur a little bit with Ben on there, that we can utilize those to a. A great extent that might help offset some of those costs involved. I did have some questions on the no net loss between the option B and C. If maybe Luke could give us a little bit better clarification on that.
Certainly, thank you. So basically, really, this is looking at a handful of different sites approaches. The B list is is certainly preferable in some ways to zoning a larger buffer than required, just because there's greater flexibility with it. But the decreasing of the development capacity assumptions is making sure that. There's a realistic capacity when analyzing the sites and the sites inventory, and that it's in accordance with what actually might get built. So the more realistic it is, really, the more likely it is that these sites are going to develop as the plan says. And that that it's it's going to work out. So if if you have more specific questions on it, I'm happy to go into it.
Just, no, I would just add that, I'm sorry. All right, I'll just add that having that administrative B list will allow us to maybe approve a project. That's in one of our mixed use zones that may be just commercial. And then pull from that B list to backfill the housing opportunity sites. And basically not have a housing element that's or a decision that's out of keeping with the housing element. Because we're able to compensate for it if we end up approving a project that's pure commercial, that maybe was anticipated to be mixed use. And then also to Luke's point, it just makes more realistic the assumptions we're making, which from what I'm seeing, is going to make HCD happy when they're reviewing it.
Okay, thank you. And then will we go to number four on there? I'm not overly thrilled with the the thought of using churches or schools. And and maybe if there's a an example of where that's been successful. You know, other than maybe short-term temporary housing or on a church property, something like that, but.
Yeah, this is, no, I'll jump in, you know, I think that's kind of a blanket policy that a lot of. Housing element folks are looking at, because schools have a lot of underutilized land, and Qatadi, that's not the case, and churches to some extent also. So for us, it's going to be St. Joseph's, you know, the Catholic Church. And that site's already zoned as a part of the downtown specific plan, so for us, it won't really make much marketed difference with regards to our existing land use policies. But it might be something that we could talk about with HCD. Schedule some meetings with the church, let them know what our policies are, what their zoning is, kind of do an education campaign similar to the ADU issue. For those folks who are the church owners, to be able to make sure they understand what their zoning is and what options they may have if they want to develop.
And that was it, that's the last of the comments I had on there, thank you. Mark, you're muted.
I believe Councilmember Sparks is next.
Thank you so much, I I really appreciate this this report and presentation being so so clear. I'll just get out of the way, number, issue number one and number three, I'm totally on board with the recommendations that were listed generally. I I I wanted to just bring this back to and speak for the folks who are struggling so much with housing right now. Because I was surprised to see that so many people in the survey said that they had not, they had a pretty easy time finding housing. And I I think it must be that such a large proportion of them had been living here for over 10 years. Because it is certainly not easy to find housing now. And I was really blown away by the number of people who are cost burdened. That 47.5% of renters in Qatadi are cost burdened, paying over 30% of their income. And if we break it down by race, there's a huge inequity, which is 56.1% of Hispanic and Latinx people are cost burdened. And only 34.3%, which is still an absurd number, but 34.3% of white people are cost burdened. So I feel like we have a, and I know that's what we're all here to do tonight, but I I just want to point out, we all have a moral obligation to do. Be creative and just do whatever we can to help this crisis on our end and all the levers that we have to pull. So to that end, for the ADU portion, issue number two. I am, I really am supportive of of trying to increase our ADU number a bit. I I I agree with all the things that were said about ADUs before in terms of. That they're fairly low impact compared to other types of housing that can be built. And also that they help the the homeowner in the larger home to afford their home as well. So it's a, it's a win-win that it helps helps people to be able to afford housing in two ways. The owner of the the larger home and the person that they're that they're renting to most likely. So I'm definitely in favor of that, and talking about the potential new problem, programs, issue number four. I'm extremely interested in incentivizing smaller units that are affordable by design. You know, some of my colleagues brought up the idea that we have seen. Housing get approved, affordable housing, and then just doesn't get built because it doesn't pencil out. And, you know, what can we really do about that? Well, I feel like creating policies that enable affordable by design. Well, I feel like creating policies that enable affordable by design housing is something we can do. That's something we can do to make housing get built here. And I think we, I would really like just to see, I'd really like to see us, in addition to some of these other ideas that were proposed for the policies and new programs, I'd like to add another, which is that we make a policy that we are going to try to streamline and incentivize affordable by design housing by removing council review and making a ministerial approach to some of the kinds of housing that we really want to see. So for example, the, in the survey that went out, the number one type of housing that people thought would be a good fit is smaller single-family homes, something that would fit in with our cottage housing ordinance. So I would love to see us make that, like really do the hard work of figuring out what that should look like, what we're going to require, and then have a huge amount of certainty for people who are considering building those kinds of developments by making it a ministerial review process. And if, I don't know if there's somebody we can use the SB 10 idea that was in the packet to enable that. But right now, we've got a situation where single, large single-family homes, which were the last place finisher in our survey of what we need, those are the easiest to build in terms of that there's certainty around the process, there's no questions about what's going to be required. And so that's what we're ending up with. Even right now, there's a project that's going to be built that is large, single-family homes, and that's not what we need right now. So anyway, that was my last point was just, I'd really like to see that additional new program too, that we're going to try to streamline these types of smaller, single-family homes and townhouses and things like that.
All right, I just want to indicate here, we have kind of mixed a little bit the two things, so, and that's fine. I just want to let everybody know, we will, since time will allow it, I believe, take one more quick pass around for a combined questions or further comments. So for those of you who held off, perhaps like I asked about speaking about new programs, you're going to have an opportunity. And if something has come up, for those of you that you want, thought about something from the presentation that you wanted to come in and forgot, we'll take one more spin at that. So, but before we do that, I'm going to go to Vice Mayor Harvey for her initial comments.
Thanks, I thought you were going to skip over me, so thank you for that. So I am okay with item number, issue number one and number three, I'm okay with those recommendations. I am generally understanding what the intent was on issue number two with the accessory dwelling unit approach. So I think that we have some capabilities there. We have used that in the past. You know, there's examples of it, certainly McGinnis Circle and in Kessing Ranch and Materi Circle, you know, there are ADUs there that, and down on East Kattati Avenue, that have been successful. So I think that that's a model that seems to fit with the character of Kattati and fits with the residents and their approvals of that. And lastly, when we get down to four, a lot of these, for me, are situations where there's not enough information in the information that was given to us for me to really say yes or no. I have concerns, you don't even have on this particular slide, all the ones that were in the packet. I thought we were going to have all the ones that are in the packet, but I am concerned about housing on church and school sites. You know, would we end up with RV parks in those? Because that's what would fit, but it is housing, so I have concerns. I really need a lot more info on that. I agree with Councilmember Ford on that workforce housing overlay in the commercial area. I'm failing to understand, with the exception of one of the examples where it said in an industrial building, you might have an apartment in there and the owner of it might live in there, that, you know, maybe is possible. But again, I need a lot more information on that. The density bonus program, I think the state program is already, you know, really pushing us, you know, really pushing us to the limits there. As far as incentivizing smaller units affordable by design, I think that's some of what we were moving towards with the cottage ordinance. And I don't see people beating down our doors to do this. And the statement that was made that we, in the big housing developments, that we just let them go by and we don't question that. Well, having seen how long it took for Kessing Ranch to be developed, it was over a decade. So there was quite a lot, you know, that went on there. And I think that that's some of why a lot of us were intent upon having that cottage ordinance. So it did help get some of these things. Here's the design we want. I think we, I agree with Noah that we probably can do some of that for ADUs to make it easier. But the bottom line, as I pointed out earlier, unfortunately, right, wrong, or otherwise, it is the larger units that pencil out for developers. And we've got to get around that, you know, when they have to do all of the things to do, you know, the example in the, one of the workforce was taking in a 2,700 square foot house and building three units instead. They still have to do all of the interiors, they have to do the multiple kitchens, they have to do the multiple bathrooms, they have, you know, it cost-wise ends up costing, which is why, you know, they do it the way they do. So I really wish that there was a nut to crack on helping with financing because we don't build houses. We can, you know, try financing options and do what we can do to give, but if the builders won't build because it's not enough profit for them, I don't know how we crack that nut. So that is, the other concern that I see a lot that isn't even addressed in any of this, but it comes up a lot on social media, is our resources and infrastructure. I mean, we have to consider that we have a limited amount of natural resource like water, and we do have to consider our infrastructure. Do we have the infrastructure to be able to support, say, sewer hookups? So those are, you know, some other issues that I don't even see addressed, but they are very real issues. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. Yeah, I will agree with the Vice Mayor. It has to happen sometimes that when I find there's a deviation from the packet, it can be problematic, particularly when it's a packet that asks us to weigh in on numerous issues and policies, then if we diverge from that, it kind of throws everybody off. So if we, as we do this in the future, if we could have these more concise or more mixing, matching each other, I think that would be helpful. On a positive note, I was very pleased to hear that a simple description of perhaps the newest component and what the state's looking for in the housing plan is that essentially beyond just meeting our numbers, is to show our plan, how we're going to accomplish it. Because that's very good for Kattati because if you look at what we've done, seems to have really worked. Our numbers have consistently been good. The only place we slack is where everybody does a little bit in very, very, in very low-house, income housing. And that's more a nature of not of our effort, but the financial problem of it and the lack of funding from the state or everyone else to meet that need. So I look at that, I see those numbers, I see what we would have got if our project by the train station go on, I'm satisfied. I think I want to meet the requirements of the state. I don't have to like them, but I recognize I have to meet them and I'm willing to do that. But having said that, because of these rapid changes, and I think Commissioner Ford alluded a little to this in a few specific examples, I'm reticent to go terribly far without a lot of specificity of what I'm being exact asked to agree to. So let me run through some of the comments I had on both the issues and the programs. Just do them at once here to get it done. I was fine with the adequate sites. I was agreed with the option A recommendation. The ADU approach, issue number two, I will admit, I initially leaned towards the safe harbor because I didn't see a justification, again, based on numbers, things like that, to go beyond RENA numbers, particularly because one thing we miss when we talk about constraints, the constraint in Kattati is actually a measurable and important one. And it's because Kattati is a very small town that really strongly prides itself on that. That is the number one thing we have heard for years from people, they do not want excess development here. They point to our poor neighbor to the south and north and say, we don't want to be like that. I mean, we've all heard that. Anyone who's lived here a while or served here a while knows that. And I will note that if you looked at the survey, that excessive development was ranked right in there, just as high as concerns about affordability and availability, which tells me my view of Kattatians, they're where I expect. They recognize housing is more of an expense than it used to be, it's worrisome. Availability is tighter for a lot of reasons, but they still aren't really looking forward to a lot of excess development. So I don't think the door's open to that from my personal perspective. So it ain't with the ADUs, though. I think that what Mr. House suggested, perhaps something like having a pre-prom design program, I could certainly supine that. Perhaps some of the others that would depend on the specific program, and I would agree with Mr. Ford, a mild increase, I don't think would be problematic and would help us with RENA, but I'm talking a mild, if we're at three and we went to maybe saying six a year, I think that fits Kattati and I don't think that's an issue. I don't really want to terribly push beyond that. Issue number three, no net loss. I think I was okay with a recommendation for using B and C. I think the place I had the greatest difficulty was number four with the new program. So my initial reaction, and I felt it was premature to ask us to weigh in on a bunch of really far-reaching programs for Kattati in terms of potential density that they could create, when we don't even have the results of our survey and looking at our history that we've been actually very successful and could make a darn good case based on just our past plans and programs that we've used that will meet our numbers and build this housing as long as the financing is available, but the one thing we can't get, and even that, we certainly do partially too. So I'm just, at this point, I'm not really convinced that Kattati will need to adopt several programs, at least newer ones. I'd like to go back and look at our original programs that we have, have those compared, and kind of take a look at those and see what works. If there's a reason some of them don't, then those will have to go before I look at a lot of newer ones. However, some of the newer ones sound okay, some of them I have issues, and I'll try to move through them quickly. Imending the zoning codes will allow residential uses with church and schools. I'll agree with the outgoing there, I wasn't really enthused about that. It isn't something I'd come to a council meeting with torches or a pitchfork either, but it just strikes me, I don't see good neighborhoods coming from this. I guess I'm open to hearing a little more about it, but I wouldn't give it a fervent thumbs up tonight at all. The next, considering a workforce housing overlay zone that essentially would help housing in our industrial and commercial areas, I had a similar action, I believe it was Councilmember Ford questioned that a little bit, and I said the same thing. I really have a hard time seeing myself supporting that. I mean, that's a completely different thing than mixed-use and PD areas, which I've supported for years, and we've all agreed to previously. But I just can't see good housing or good neighborhoods coming from opening the door to building housing in a commercial zones or particularly in industrial zones, even if it helps us on paper, make a few points with the housing, HCA, I don't see, I don't like having that because once we have that on the books, I don't know what unintended consequence might come from that. Same thing kind of with the city density bonus program. Conceptually, on a case-by-case basis, if we had a developer had a project we really liked, say in a PDA, and they were looking for one thing just a little beyond what they could get through the state specific, I would be open to considering that as a council member. I think we all would. We wouldn't want to miss a good program, make a good building if maybe something like that would help. But just having a additional city density bonus beyond what the state's already done, which is very expansive and very healthy, I think that the state's already taken up all the air with that. So I'm not really interested in that. I would prefer just take it on a case-by-case basis and be open to that as a council. I know that doesn't help us with our needs, but I think it gets us better projects overall. Workforce housing, a program to purchase existing multifamily or new development PDAs using JPA financing tools? Yeah, that sounds interesting. I could support that. Obviously, the details, the devil's in the details, but with that, sure. Same with creating a program to waive, set to zero, pay down certain impact keys for very low-income housing fees. Want to see the details, but yeah, I like the sound of that. Incentivizing smaller units of all types that are affordable by design. We already did this with cottage housing, and we haven't really seen where that's gone. And that was something different for Kattati, and the densities have been much higher than the council members who were around when we first started discussing cottage housing some years ago. So I'd like to see that play out. I recognize that we legally have to allow many housing types, and I don't certainly want to try and make any housing type illegal, but I don't want to specifically encourage or push for getting certain housing types that may not be a great fit for Kattati. And I would say, for example, I think co-housing works great, we see in downtown, but single-room occupancies or dormitory-style homes? I think I could see that in downtown Santa Rosa, perhaps. I don't think I can see it in Kattati, and I don't think most Kattatians would be thrilled with us pushing that. Let's see. Along with that, there were two ways of looking at this were being suggested. One was density unit equivalents, a concept to help us in our PD areas by essentially increasing the density greatly and valuing it differently. I'd be concerned about the density of the project. As I've said before, devil's in the details, not sure if I like it. But one thing I know for sure, I'd have to see before I'd agree to having something like that on the books and not a case-by-case thing to consider. Would be answers to the parking problems. Both of our major PDAs have significant parking issues, just with the planned build-out we have. If we increase that densification by any great amount, that makes those problems much worse. I know the state doesn't believe parking's a problem anymore. Those of us that live here and work for our town know, unfortunately, it still is. So I want to see that solved before I'm willing to accept in general that sort of concept. And I was concerned with the SB 10 style recommendation, local way of approaching that, that we're kind of going, again, by right. And I don't remember, was the Vice Mayor mentioned that? But I, I'm not really comfortable with going by right and opening ourselves to outcomes when I'm not sure what the outcomes, unexpected outcomes could really be. If we did discuss encouraging neighborhood housing, I could support the smaller, single-family housing that was the preference of the community. I'd ask why we couldn't have that counted as four units since any single-family housing potentially, we've made a plan there. If we put in a single-family house, that could be split into two houses, each house can have an ADU, and you can actually have six families there with two JDUs. So I don't know if that's possible, but at any rate, that's what I heard the community said, that's what I would expect from this community, and I could support that. As far as duplexes, townhomes, where they can feather inappropriate neighborhoods, I'd be open to that too, but just generically pushing them wherever there's an open space, I might want to look at that more closely. And again, with incentivizing affording a missing middle, like I said, I'd support the smaller, single-family homes that were the clear preferences, but I think that would get, so that's a lot of comments from me. We got that done all at once. So with that, I'm going to come back around. First, I'm going to open it to public comment one more time, and then we'll have one more, I believe we have time for everyone to take one quick pass and see if there's any further comments or questions and anything. So if I could ask the clerk to open it to public comment, please?
Thank you, Mayor Lammon. Loriann Barber, go ahead.
Hi, Loriann Barber here. I hope I can be coherent because I'm really just making a comment and it's kind of a more general, not really directed specifically at a piece of this. But in looking at developing housing and working with the housing element, I would really like for all of us to keep in mind that we're in a climate crisis and to remember that as we go forward. And I think part of what that would drive, from my opinion, is looking at as much density as we can, the more... you know, the bigger things we build, the more resources we're using and people are continuously using. And so that's kind of my general comment that I know we, I know there are requirements from the state and we have to meet, you know, some of those things, but as much as possible to remember that it's a climate crisis, things aren't like they used to be, and we should remember that as we go forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Callum Weeks, go ahead.
Good evening, council members and planning commissioners. My name is Callum Weeks and I am the Policy Director with Generation Housing, where we advocate for more and more affordable and more diverse housing. I just want to make a few brief remarks. First and foremost, I think it was, you'll have to forgive me, I think it was either Planning Commissioner or City Councilor, I can't recall, mentioned, you know, the idea of creating more plexes and, and really I would like to strongly encourage that in the process of considering the options available and in terms of like, you know, diversifying the overall mix of your housing types, to really give thought and, and I think a lot of consideration for plex-type housing, especially with, I think, the corresponding by right option and creating kind of ministerial processes for this. And, and certainly one way you can do that is maybe consider adopting, you know, what Napa-Sinoma ADU is doing and applying that to, or at least scaling that up so that actually it then would essentially, you know, essentially would emulate that, and then you would create options or designs that are acceptable through a ministerial process for plexes from two to 10 units. So I, I, yeah, I would like to give strong consideration that. And in respect to the, the previous commenters comment about, you know, concerns about water resources, totally, totally valid. But one of the things, and this might be considered a shameless plug, but I would strongly encourage, actually visiting Generation Housing's website, we produced a, a piece about water drought and, you know, continuing the process of building, given, you know, the, the climate realities that we're facing. And we have another of other great reports that I, I would strongly recommend, you know, both elected and, and, you know, citizens alike of the city of Catari to consider reviewing. They're really informative, well-researched, and, and they might actually help guide you in this process of, of envisioning, you know, a, a, a future for, for the city of Catari. With that, thank you so much for your time. I really appreciate your service.
Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
All right. Well, we've got about five minutes here and perhaps we can stretch a little if we need to. But I just want to check through everybody real quickly and see if there's any last comment or question that anybody would like to make, and I don't want to miss anyone if I can. So I'm going to start with Commissioner Hancock.
Yes, thank you. I mean, I, I just think we need to be able to have a diverse set of housing and ability for the people doing the building, being able to fit it onto the pieces of land. And particularly doing that in a, in the downtown corridor. So, you know, I, I think people have said everything with the specifics, but it's really not addressing very well how it can be built at a low, at a lower cost, and particularly the, the higher density, the plexes and things. We have got spaces, I think, downtown, looking at those, or in, should I say, the east side of the town that could meet with that, but east of Lancaster in those areas, but it's, so anyway, I'm, it's just a very general comment. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. All right, let's see. Next, Commissioner Moore.
Just a couple of things. One about the housing on, on churches. So there's a couple of examples, at least one example that I see in Petaluma on St. James that they built housing. So we might want to look into how that process went, and I know that it's been successful at that church site. And then just another, just a comment on that Commissioner Murphy had about bigger families. I know quite a few families that have multi-generation living in their big homes, and it's either college kids that have come back home or a grandmother or, you know, multiple generations now. And I think that's an option also that you have to look at when it comes to housing that not every small cottage, not everybody needs a, a small cottage to themselves, that when you have a, a bigger home, that you have to take care of an elderly parent or you have, like I said, multi-generation with small children and everyone's living under a house, you may have ten people living in a bigger home, but that all works because they all, obviously, it's affordable for them. So just another way to look at what affordable housing can look like, sometimes when you don't see it from the outside. Those are my comments.
Well, good. Thank you. And let's, I'm going to go one last time for Commissioner Rodriguez.
No, no comments or questions. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let me jump, jump into Commissioner Murphy, Commissioner Murphy.
Thanks. Yeah, and what Commissioner Moore said, kudos to the grandmas and grandpas who helped us raise our children. I just wanted to mention that what I, one thing I heard through our conversations was trying to break down barriers to make the process more expedited or streamlined, and I really valued the conversation today, and I think our community members do as well. We heard some really, I think, breakthrough thinking on different ways that we could try to accommodate these requirements that are outside of the normal scope of the programs. And so I'm just hopeful that we can, we, we don't ever consider the option of taking away the opportunity for us to present these things to the commission and to the city council, and as a result, to our community members, opening up the opportunity to speak and share our ideas and concerns and questions, because I think that's a really valuable part of our process.
You're muted, Mark.
That's twice. If I do three, I have to buy ice cream for everybody. So I'll have to be careful. Chair Linus, I'm going to you next.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate all the conversation today and learning about all the different programs that are available, and I hope that through this process, we can come up with a housing element that will provide more housing and affordable housing. That's one of my focuses, that there's more affordable housing developments. Thank you.
And thank you. And all right, we're switching to the council. Councilmember Ford, please lead us off.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. At first, I just want to make one point. I, I think it was Luke who used the term co-housing and said maybe those units wouldn't count towards RENA. You need to look up what co-housing is. That's not the case. So co-housing is fully, full units that count fully. So one, it feels to me like I've heard general agreement on, on issues one through three. Like we're, we're all good with the no rezoning plan. We're all good with a modest increase in ADU. Like with, with saying we're going to do some things like, and, and actually doing some things to let people know about the ADU and JDU options so that we can claim a slightly higher production, like as several people have mentioned, six a year as a, as a goal. The, the options B and C for the no net loss didn't have any objection from any speakers I heard of. So most of our discussion has been around these possible new programs. Commissioner Moore mentioned a possible church housing option that we ought to look at as an example, and I think if, if staff wants to bring back a church and school possible option, then we, we're definitely going to need examples because a lot of us are having trouble seeing where that's going to, where that's going to happen here. Same with the workforce housing overlay. What are some examples of either in nearby towns or, or where you actually, what are those parcels where you actually see it working here? Density bonus, a lot of us feel like the state has, has already just in the last year pushed it really hard, and it's hard to see going too much above that, except as Mayor Landman said, on a case-by-case basis. But the affordable by design issue, especially the issue of treating small studio or one bedroom, the same as a five-bedroom house for the purposes of calculating density. I think, I think we could reasonably address that. And without, like, I, I would take issue with the way we calculate density, frankly. I think to say that a five-bedroom house is the same impact as, as one studio apartment is just silly. So we got to come up with better ways to talk about density than just by unit. So I appreciate that that's one of the options we're talking about here, and I hope we can get there. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. I, I would concur with Councilmember Ford on, on all those issues. The only thing I would throw a caveat on is density bonus. I think the state at, at that level is, is significant enough. I don't know if any of you have ever been involved with housing that's like tenement housing or people are stacked on top of each other. And HUD did this in the 50s and the 60s. And if you look at those units, they've had all kinds of issues because you've got too many people crammed into one place. That's just my opinion on that. And I've been down there and I've actually done work in those units, so I'm very familiar with those. And everything else I seem to be okay with at this point. Thank you.
All right, now Councilmember Sparks.
Thank you. I, I wanted to make one, one final statement, which was just that we really need to listen to what our constituents are telling us about housing affordability being their number one issue in terms of housing. I was looking at the survey numbers and 73% ranked housing affordability as either number one or number two. And only 29% ranked development as their number one or number two issue. So by a huge margin, people are very concerned with affordability because it's directly affecting their lives and such a chaotic, like, I can't overstate what a huge problem it is. So to segue that to, to my main point is that the number one thing we as leaders can do to affect the price of housing is to streamline the process and every additional meeting and bit of uncertainty that gets injected to the process adds directly to the cost of that housing when it comes out the other end. So I'm going to keep pounding the drum to streamline the process and do the hard work upfront, make things by right, and that's what we can do to bring down the cost. Thank you.
All right. Vice Mayor Harvey.
Yes, I will probably disagree a little bit with Councilmember Sparks. I think over the years in attending council meetings and planning commission meetings, one of the things that gets people out and gets a lot of public input are these developments. So I think that we need to be very careful and cognizant of just how much we do ministerially, because if you by right have all of these developments and the public gets no say in those developments, that is an unintended consequence because most of the developments that we have had over the last, at least decade, they have evolved to get where they are at, and that evolution has happened because of public input around those. So I would be very reluctant to, you know, cut off the public's input because it's by right that a developer gets to, to develop. So it's just a caution of an unintended consequence that we want to be sure, because people aren't going to be paying attention during these meetings. When they pay attention is when they find out something is being developed next to them. So, other than that, great presentation. I look forward to us looking through the programs that have worked for us and understanding why some haven't worked for us and looking at some of these new programs. And the only concern I have with having too many programs is the ability of developers to pick and choose pieces out of individual programs to put together their own program because they like this piece out of this one and this piece out of this one and that, you know, and so here's my package because I, you know, cherry picked what I want. So we have to be a little bit careful about how many programs we have. But thank you for the presentation and hopefully we will get there.
Well, thank you. And I'm going to thank Councilmember Ford for saving me some work here and kind of wrapping up some of what he'd heard tonight. I think that's helpful, and I will encourage staff to send minutes as soon as possible to all of us while this meeting's still fresh in our mind, so we can look over the direction that staff heard tonight and make sure we're all, we all, we're at the same meeting. So I'll conclude my comments. First, I will mention, I think it's disingenuous just to point out that because when we ask people to list one through five, what's, what's most important, the least important, but we give them a variety of issues. Yes, the number one issue was right now for affordability for people because that's relatively a recent shock over this decade, shall we say. I'm old enough to call that relatively recent. But if you look at the total numbers, you will find that excessive development was something that everybody mentioned, and that's why it's 96 above, housing availability 93, and not much below housing affordability at 106 combined responses. And that jives with my 34 years of living in this town, knowing the people, hearing their thoughts, and almost 13 years of, as Council Vice Chair Harvey said, when they come to the meetings expressing what they want to see in Catari and what they don't want to see. I, I like to mention the climate crisis because I agree it's interesting. We talk about that, then we put on a different hat, and we talk about housing, and we go in different directions. But I think we really need to consider water because the calculation has changed for water. It appears with the change in weather patterns here. And we certainly need to consider fire. Here we are as a council, potentially looking at, taking another look at fire plans, and yet extreme density is a problem in fire-prone areas, and that's a reality we have to consider too, and that wasn't considered at all. And as far as GHD reductions, I read somewhere earlier in the report, that is supposed to be considered as part of the element, but I didn't see it mentioned anywhere in any of the material I saw. It's all about increasing density. Along with most of my colleagues, I'm really not, I believe, most of my colleagues, I'm not interested in furthering ministerial actions. I would agree that the conversations, long, difficult, and maybe are what leads to the best outcomes. And we certainly have already done significant work in trying to make some things that we can without losing the quality that Catarians demand ministerial. So I know we've already made enough action in that place that I feel quite comfortable with that. So I, I would never support that, I think, at this point. Just in general, I'd like to see that the outcomes fit Catari. I'm not sure if our consultant knows the town, but they've done a lot of work and they've done great survey work, but I don't know if they know the town the way those of us who've lived here for a long time do, and that's important because despite what the state's pushing within that structure that we have to live in, we have to do our best to make this fit Catari's values, not San Jose's, certainly not even our friends in Ronard Park because it's a different thing here, and the people expect that from us. And if they find out down the road that we haven't kept that in mind as we address these issues, we won't have done our job. I think all of us have indicated as we've ran for office or applied for appointments that we value Catari's small-town values. I hope we don't forget that. So with that, I thank everybody for a good conversation. I think we're going to have a few more of these. And with that, I will let the lucky members of the planning commission go to their evening, and the unfortunate members of the council member have five minutes off or maybe 10 minutes perhaps, if we can, Mr. Obed, before we switch to our council meeting. Mr. Obed, can we take a 10-minute recess? Be about five minutes late starting the council meeting?
So we can, we can start the meeting and just have it, have the screen up, and then we can actually start it five minutes late, which is fine.
Yeah, I, I think that will be good. We'll give everyone just a second, get a drink of water, whatever they need to do, and get ready for the next meeting. So thank you again, everybody. We are adjourned with this meeting at 7:25, and I look forward to seeing you all next time.
Are we in the same Zoom for the council meeting or is there a different?
I believe it's a different Zoom. I'll let the city manager speak to that. I've got two emails.
It's a different Zoom?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're leaving this soon. Yeah.